Good morning. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, June 1st. Time is 9:00 a.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order. What I'd like to do first is I'd like to open the meeting with a moment of silence for the Floyd family and for what's going on in the nation currently. To me, we all need to be one nation under God. And for that reason, I want to have a moment of just silent prayer to yourself. If anyone has any questions or comments in reference to this meeting, you can email those to thecommissioners@co.delaware.in.us. Let's all stand for the pledge, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kyle, I'm not seeing the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Just want to state the, we have a limited number of seating in the room. Everyone is, the seats have been placed, so everyone's six feet apart, so we're trying to promote social distancing. So with that, Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Okay. Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
I'm here.
Mr. Brooke.
Present.
Okay, we have a public hearing to establish a weight restriction on County Road 400 South between State Road 32 and County Road 800 West. With this public hearing, comments to the public hearing may be posted online via the county's Facebook page during livestream. Comments will be added as part of the record and monitored during the course of this public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about the weight limit? Angie, do you want to update us on this?
Sir, I had received several complaints about semis coming off of State Road 32 in Daleville, turning east onto 400 South and then heading south on 800 West. There's been multiple property damages from trucks being caught up. They've had to be towed out. We've repaired the road multiple times, added stone, and it just keeps getting torn up. And I reached out to the state to see if they could put any type of signage along 32, and they said they'd be happy to, but they need something official from the county first before they put up their signage.
Is anyone having questions?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing and a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Gentlemen, before we go any further, there was no other, there was no comments that you've seen?
Not that I've seen.
Okay. All right, well, going down to appointments, the Muncie Public Library, they are requesting reappoint Mary Buck and Daniel Stallings.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mary Buck and Daniel Stallings.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those appointments in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
What are these term dates?
We'll have to get that.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to get it. I think they're a normal four years. Yeah, I believe it is a four-year term.
When does it start? Seven-one or six-one?
We'll get it on the count.
Okay, the next one is a Fair Board appointment, Mark Pitzer. Mark DiFabio is requesting that we appoint Mark Pitzer in place of Larry Clendenon's spot, who's resigned due to health conditions. Larry was a big part of the Fair Board out there and did a lot of good work, but what's your pleasure on that, guys?
I'll make a motion to appoint Larry Pitzer. Now with, is this only to serve out Larry Clendenon's?
Says his term would expire 12/31 of 2020. So, yeah.
Okay.
So, James made a motion to appoint Mark Pitzer.
Second.
Sherri, second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Table business, the ordinance established, reestablished the Kuhn Bridge Fund. What's your pleasure on that?
John, we don't have to pass that today.
No, you do not.
Don't we have until?
You can, you have, until the end of the month. It has to be published by the end of the month.
I'd like to keep that table for now until
Okay.
we can look a little bit further into our financing.
Approval of minutes, May 18, 2020?
I move. Second.
A motion to approve the minutes in a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Can I get the special meeting on the 26th also approved?
Are those done?
Yes, I sent them to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, she did.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes in a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next, presentations, contracts, agreements for approval, Meeks Cockrell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, there's two resolutions, I have copies of them. I don't know if you have copies in front of you or not?
The Commissioners do.
Okay, so the first thing is that for the town of Daleville, they filed a petition to remonstrate against the rate increase. And you guys hired me last, I think your last meeting to look into this. Their rate does not meet the requirement. It hasn't gone up. For Daleville, their rate would have had to go at $70 and $0.01. It's only going to $60 and $0.31. Statutory department would need to start a public hearing. In addition, the vote position is that, so I've prepared this resolution which takes care of none of the public. Same thing for Westbrook. There should have gone up more than $75 and $86. They only went to $70 and $0.31. Both of them didn't meet the requirement for a rate increase. In addition, there is the municipal charter that we want to make part of the corporate agreement. And put it with your minutes.
I'll take that.
Of a couple of them.
Do you have the contract for this?
John, can you kind of explain the reason for the rate increases, please?
Jason's here. Jason could better do that.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you. Can't wear my glasses with mask on and...
Jason Richards, Delaware County Regional West Water Executive Director. We're doing multiple projects throughout the district and also reaching future projects as well. We were, didn't really start a, about a $5.5 million project in the Westbrook area to pigs and I and public health issues that the district's having. We wanted to get money for that to the Indiana Finance Authority and have the hell of great money on us loving all of our reach. Prior, we had the Rourke customers, the DeSoto customers that were $102.69, then the district gave them a $5 reduction, and the DeSoto customers were at $88. $5 reduction, so it was at $97.69. And so, and our other customers, Daleville, were $548.9, got $2.3 million of grant forgiveness Indiana Finance Authority, and that's our, about this double rate structure.
So, you guys, in an effort to receive free money,
Yeah.
you have to get your rates in order per the state, correct?
Yes.
That's the reason for this?
And, and the Westbrook project, when did that go online? How, how many years ago? I mean, it's been...
Seventy-nine.
So, since seventy-nine, there's been no major improvements out there at all, hardly?
We, they've added additions, but no major improvements.
What size pipe are you going from, too?
We're going from a 21-inch main over there by the 600 real estate and real brand to 60-inch.
Wow, quite an improvement.
Along with two sections of about $1.6 million of I and I.
Very good.
And when's your project starting?
We're having pre-construction contracts and we'll get another...
What kind of finish date are you looking at?
It's a 12-month project.
Okay, good. So, should take care of some of that major problems we've had for years. Thank you, Richard.
Right, is anybody having further questions? What's your pleasure on the resolutions?
Do those now.
We want to do those now, John?
You adopt this, if you want, desire to adopt the resolutions, you can adopt the resolutions, and that would end the appeal because they failed to beat the statutory criteria.
I move we adopt.
Second.
So, we have a motion to adopt both resolutions and a second. Denise, what would be the numbers on those? Could be 18 and 19?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt resolution 2020-18 and 2020-19 in a second. You call the rolls, please, Steve.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Okay, now we're at ordinance 2020-006, an ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County. This is the one, this is the 400 South, the one we had the public hearing on. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2020-006.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce the ordinance regulating traffic on 400 South in a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, resolution number 2020-16, resolution of Delaware County Commissioners, transfer county-owned real, real property to the city of Muncie and accept city-owned real property from the city of Muncie.
This is a resolution for the, as we presented to you originally and presented again, this is a resolution to send to the city to transfer, I think it's Exhibit B, 20-some, maybe even 30-some lots, part of which, the majority of which are for blight elimination. Transfer those in exchange for three lots out on South Tillotson Avenue. This allows the city to continue their blight elimination program and also to, they would have to adopt a substantially similar resolution for the county.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve resolution 2020-16, exchange of properties between the city and the county, and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Steve. Resolution 2020-017, a resolution to move Delaware County in back on track.
This is a resolution that, at your request, was drafted that mirrors the governor's back-on-track program. I'm sorry. Back-on-track program to start allowing the public to come into the county building, increases the numbers of people in the county building, to get things to try and back to normal, whatever that is, anymore.
You might say our new norm.
Our new normal, there you go, that's...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this resolution and a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Okay, department heads or elected officials?
Morning Commissioners, Molly Hunt, Delaware County Purdue Extension. I'm here today with the Delaware County 4-H Council and our Delaware County 4-H educator, and we are coming before you today to request permission to use the Delaware County fairgrounds for the 4-H portion of the fair. In your inboxes, you have a copy of our safety plan, and so I apologize for the tardiness of that, that you haven't necessarily had time to review that in detail. But I am happy to provide an outline of that and answer any questions you might have about how we're going to ensure the health and safety of all of our participants, volunteers, and staff members to carry that out.
Give us a few points about the dates and the times and...
So, we would carry the Delaware County 4-H fair out on, during the proposed dates and times. A couple of notable changes so far, I mean, first and foremost, we're being flexible. So, as the needs of change, as the recommendations change from the governor in here locally, we are adapting this plan ongoing to be flexible to meet those needs. So, one notable change, however, is for the fair, usually the animals move in, and they're there for the duration of the fair and the week. So, our proposal is a show-and-go type of fair. So, if you're familiar with an open show, the animals come in for the day, they show, and then they leave. And so what this will do is this will reduce a lot of the one-on-one contact that people might have. It will also have a de-densification process on the fairgrounds, that there won't be so many people there at once. Another proposal is that we have an exhibitor-only fair, and so this is going to be open to our youth participants and their immediate family, a parent. Not, this is not going to be a public show. We will not have seating in the show arenas, so family members or leaders will stand. During those times where social distancing is not possible, we will, we will ask that people wear face covering, but social distancing and sanitation will be our highest priority.
About the famous auction, how would it be held?
So, to my knowledge, the auction would be done virtually, and it would be a premium style only auction out of respect to our businesses and some of the financial limitations they're currently under. I think, can I bring up Sean Eldridge?
Sure.
Can he be able to speak a little bit better to some of you?
Sure.
Thank you. So, Auction Committee has already had one, two big changes from high school, so because they're going in and leaving same day, we'll do more of the challenges based with the wagers. Have to take your angles on. Find somebody has means to... The auction, basically, it's have the person fair offer of base. Auction Committee's going to reach out to our past exhibitors, plus if they're in a possible means this year to contribute, please let us know. Buy that money, basically, the one hot style auction, where we just cross all the virtual and in-person exhibitors and working. That's how we felt that we could really try to keep it fair this year. Really, it's more of a, I almost hesitate using the word auction, it's more of a kind of get support.
Donation pile.
Kids, basically, help them for next year, if you realize that there's hardship this year. So, if we can do that, there's businesses that can support, family members that can support them, that kind of gets that money back to them, to realize that auction money can jumpstart the project for next year, in a lot of cases, or provided some of the upperclassmen in high school, basically, money for vehicles in college.
Sure. So, you can come back to our first meeting in July and give us more details and...
Yes.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
I think that's probably one thing that Molly mentioned, is the plan, it's kind of is constant.
We've learned a lot from everything so fast.
So, Purdue's regulated a lot of what you're doing, correct?
So, so what we are doing there, not necessarily Purdue rules, and I would hesitate any county from saying that, we've adopted the governor's back-on-track plan, and we are enforcing that.
Okay.
Our recommendations are not above and beyond what the governor has recommended, and all of our, our safety plan and our plan to have a face-to-face fair is hinged on the fact that we're at stage five when this happens.
Okay.
And so, as a, a safety net for all of our families and our youth who might have at-risk health conditions or might not just be comfortable coming to a face-to-face event, we have a virtual option that's available for every single youth, so that they may participate and they can...
So, I'll rephrase that. Purdue has to approve your plan, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Along with the Health, Delaware County Health Department and the Delaware County Commissioners?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Before we may move forward, we, we need your permission to utilize the fairgrounds and also your approval of the plan, but we, we also want your input. This is the community's plan. This is a community event. These are kids from all of Delaware County, and so we really want your input and expertise as well, and then we'll take it to Jamie Bane and Dr. Wilkins, and then after that, it will go to the Director of Extension for approval, and we must have those three approvals to move forward.
So, I've been in some meetings with them, and they are, they're doing a lot of great things there, and I think with, with the Health Department, I've also spoke with Jamie Bane in reference to this, and Jamie's, Jamie's ready to take a look at the plan, so I think they'll, they'll do it in a, in a safe manner, and I would recommend that we approve the fair.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the 4-H fair in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
We'll be back in July to provide you with an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other department heads or elected officials?
Shannon, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'd like to commend the organizers of the protests that happened Saturday and Sunday. It was a peaceful protest. Nobody was arrested. Nothing happened to any of our buildings or structures. They came in, they protested, and they went home. I would like to commend everybody that was there that day. As a law enforcement officer, I can say what happened in Minneapolis was wrong, should have never happened. As a defensive tactics instructor that teaches around the country, to other law enforcement officers, the tactics that was used that day was totally wrong. The other officers that were standing by should have spoke up and told him to get off that man. You're not taught to put your knee across anybody's neck to apply pressure because you are taught that that will kill a person. Once the fight is over, once the struggle is over, you're done. Get up off the person. Once you're handcuffed, it is over with. I stand with the people that were protesting because it was wrong, and people also need to understand there are good law enforcement officers out there that do the job right. So, you can't blame every law enforcement officer for what happened in Minneapolis because a lot of us, we stand with you because that was extremely wrong, what happened up there, and should have never happened. And I agree with Mr. Floyd's girlfriend, the rioting and the looting is not the answer. Peaceful protest is the answer. We don't destroy our own communities because you have to remember there are people that own those businesses, that you are destroying their lives. Not only the COVID-19 is shutting down some of the local businesses, but your actions will shut down local business, and you will destroy lives. One life and family was destroyed. We don't want to continue to destroy others. Like Shannon said, we're one nation, we're one country, we need to stick together. And I am not taking up for that law enforcement officer. What he did was wrong. He should be punished. The other three should be punished also for not taking a stand and helping Mr. Floyd. And like I said, I teach around the country, I teach law enforcement officers, the tactic that was used was totally wrong, and every department needs to stress. You do not apply pressure with your knees, legs, or anything to somebody's neck. That's not our job. Our job is to serve and to protect people, and that's all people. So, I just want to say the ones that was here in Muncie that protested, they did it the right way. I thank you for doing that.
I agree with you, James. I've been in law enforcement 28 years, and I'm not a law enforcement critic, but by no means, but when I seen that video, I'll be honest with you, I couldn't believe what I seen. And you, it punches me in the gut, as I'm sure it does you, that someone of our profession would act irresponsible the way that law enforcement officer did. And so, I, I agree with what you said, James. It's upsetting because it feels like you worked so hard in your career to gain people's trust, and now all that's out the window. So, it's very upsetting.
I had a chance to read the morning paper, and they did have another protest Sunday at City Hall. I, too, like the one on Saturday, appreciate that they were just there to express. But I think every community around the nation needs to look at the, I don't know with all this privacy, but when this young, this man that did this to his fellow person, he had some 17 or 18 complaints before, and I think only two were maybe punished. But there's just something wrong when an individual has gotten by with something like this, and you know it's happened elsewhere, it's been covered up, and it should not happen. And it's just so sad.
You're right, Sherri. Okay, any other department heads or elected officials? Okay, we have the weights and measures report. Everybody got a copy of that? We have the payment of claims of $1,988,687.77.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the claims in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, has anyone signed up to speak? Jenny, no one signed up to speak? Who are you?
Mr. Jason, Department of Muncie.
Oh, yeah, you probably should have spoke during department heads. Come on up.
Yeah, come on up. Tell us all the good news going on.
Sorry, didn't know I said department heads, counting this, counting.
Yeah, we're all department heads.
I wanted to clarify something. Mr. Brooke, it's my understanding that the resolution that was passed today and the resolution that was passed... and the resolution that was passed on Friday by the Muncie Redevelopment Commission have to be substantially similar in order for that to take effect.
Correct. The resolution that was adopted today was different than the one that was adopted on Friday by the, but the Redevelopment Commission still has the opportunity to adopt this resolution to be substantially similar.
Correct. So I, I just want to be sure that the resolution that was adopted today by the county was not adopted. It was presented to and voted down by the Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
As I understand it, the version that was adopted today by the commissioners in its entirety was not voted down. There was an amendment made to the, to the resolution which changed some of the properties in it on Friday.
But they are not substantially similar.
They're not substantially similar.
My understanding is that the Muncie Redevelopment Commission's resolution, the, I'm not voting here, was, that is, I believe the resolution that you voted on today was voted down. They approved another resolution that was for the 19 blight elimination property only. And they voted to accept the 19 blight elimination properties to save the county $87,900 for those properties that are coming through the deed sale. And that was just the blight elimination properties only. No, no trading for any other properties that the county owns. So just pay for the lots. And that the deadline for the city to be able to show site control of the 19 blight elimination properties is today. And that those, those 19 properties won't be demolished with money from the state of Indiana that costs the city and the county nothing unless, unless the commissioners will approve the resolution that was before, that the Muncie Redevelopment Commission approved on Friday.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is that what the commissioners adopted today is they adopted a, a trade which includes those 19 properties and some other properties for properties on South Tillotson. That is, that would give control to the city of those 19 blight elimination properties if the Redevelopment Commission would adopt a substantially similar resolution to the one that was adopted today. So the ball is, is, it's still there. The commissioners have given their approval for those blight elimination properties. The Redevelopment Commission would have to adopt a substantially similar resolution.
Right. But we, the Muncie Redevelopment Commission cannot meet for 48 hours and we have to show site control of those blight elimination lots today or we lose the money.
Well, the commissioners had, had submitted several different resolutions to the Redevelopment Commission and to the mayor's office. It was clearly the intent of the commissioners. And as recently as last Thursday, they were exchanging resolutions back and forth. The resolution that the commissioners adopted today was not the resolution that was rejected by the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Commission amended that resolution that transferred properties. There was an amendment made, as, as I remember in the meeting, there was amendment made to trade some properties on South Tillotson for some other properties, but not the blight elimination properties. That amendment was then defeated. And then the commission adopted a resolution which had not been approved by the commissioners or even considered by the commissioners for just the blight elimination properties and a trade for 80-some thousand dollars, more or less. And what the commissioners adopted today was giving the blight elimination properties and some other properties to the Redevelopment Commission for the exchange of the properties on South Tillotson.
So we're going to sign this today as your proof that you're getting those properties?
Yep.
Yeah, but she, what she, this is the one you want adopted.
Right, we want the.
She, she needs that one today or she's going to lose her $87,000.
No, the $87,000 is coming to the county. She's going to lose $1.4 million because, more or less.
Well, thank you. She's going to lose her 1.4, yeah.
But that wasn't, the, the commissioners have been very clear about what their intent was, to transfer properties. And that wasn't done by the Redevelopment Commission.
Well, you have a board that has a mind of their own, I'm sure.
Sure.
I have nothing to do with the Redevelopment. I'm only here to represent the blight elimination.
Right. But they, you work together with them?
Yes.
I, I know there was a comment made, because I've watched the MRC meetings, that, by one of the members that stated that we'll put it in the hands of the commissioners and we'll just see what they think about blight elimination. John, how many properties have we given to MRC to have demolished?
247.
How many has been demolished?
Uh, I don't know exactly how many have been demolished, but there's still 157 which are in, still in the name of the MRC, not put back on the tax rolls. 65%.
So that's actually tax dollars that we're losing with them not being placed back on the tax roll, correct?
That's correct.
Dean?
Dean, for your Muncie and Muncie Redevelopment Commission, my records show that 200 parcels were trans, were trans, were taxed in, tax sale certificates. Of those 203, 156 were, and all 146 of those that were slated to be demolished were demolished. The purpose of the program is not to necessarily put properties back on the tax roll. The purpose of the program, blighted structures. Studies show that blighted structures reduce property values within 350 of them by 15% addition to not having the taxes paid on them. Whether or not they're on the tax roll, there's still, there's still a benefit to them being tax exempted from file ads, no longer depressing the property values within 350. 146 of the tax sale certificate properties that were demolished, also demolished an additional approximately 60 properties through the program that the Muncie Redevelopment Commission were fired. So that's been a work that has helped depress some of the property values around the city.
Well, the, the commissioners were very clear in January of 2018 that the purpose of transferring these properties was to put them back on the tax rolls. While that may not be the purpose of the blight elimination program, that's the purpose of the commissioners. Very clearly said in their January 2018 meeting that they wanted to get these back on the tax rolls. And a promise was made by the Redevelopment Commission that they would all be back on the tax rolls within six months. They would be, the properties would be removed and they'd be back on the tax rolls within six months. Yep. Well, I, I reviewed the video and.
I mean, it's been a little bit, but my reflection of the commonest of digital offerings, but in my time here. The Muncie Redevelopment Commission can't force someone to purchase our properties. We've offered up our properties. We can't, we can't force someone to take ours.
The representation was made that they would be back on the tax rolls within six months. And what the commissioners have done with the deed sale and working with the treasurer and the auditor is they've sold 500 and some odd properties last year, or more than that probably, that actually did get back on the tax rolls. And they have another 300 and some odd, I think, this year at the deed sale to go back on the tax rolls that private individuals are purchasing.
What, what are they holding on to the properties for? Do you, you know?
Like I mentioned, we have offered up, so just of the tax sale properties, the fact that certificates that were assigned to us, it looks like 100, half of those properties.
Six months.
And I know there's, there's a significant portion held by the Muncie Redevelopment that has a first sales agreement on the, on the properties. Are new, new houses, plus an additional 40 or so properties and other properties that are being offered.
They're selling the properties?
It's up.
The Muncie Redevelopment first has, uh, plans for properties.
Yeah.
Aside from to, for the construction of low income housing, that's 36,714.
Dean, will you try to speak a little louder because people can't hear you?
Okay.
The audience in Facebook. Well, I don't.
No.
Nah, you're fine.
Uh, I.
We've got, I mean, we've got to help the city get this money.
I just want to make sure that you understand that these blight elimination, 19 blight elimination properties will not be demolished unless you, you county commissioners approve the resolution for only the 19 properties. And that we are offering you 87,900 for those. And that, because today is the deadline, that we have to show site control for those.
When was your meeting?
When was our meeting?
Yeah, to, to discuss that resolution.
Friday morning.
It was Friday morning.
It's Friday morning, so.
This has all kind of been a last minute thing. But the blight elimination program ends in October. And I was not aware that, we've been meeting for several, several months with Joe Reps and Ed Carroll and Charlie Richmond from Steve's office, talk about this and get it all hashed out. And then this deadline came up that I wasn't really aware of. And it kind of pushed things, make things happen faster, which sometimes can be good and sometimes is not good because people feel rushed to make decisions about things. But I really do feel like there is.
Six months, yeah.
There is a way to make the rest of this happen with the three lots on Tillotson. I know that the mayor's in favor of it. And I know you all have been in negotiations about it. I just hate to see these 19 properties, which, did you all get these little pictures?
Um, I didn't print it up.
They're all in pretty bad shape. I mean, they're all in really bad shape. If you live next door to them or across the street from them, you would really want to see them.
One of my things is, is the comment that was made that we will just send this back to the commissioners and if the commissioners don't pass our resolution, that means that the commissioners are against blighted properties. And that came from, and there's a video of their meeting and that came from one of the MRC board members. And I don't think he knows how many properties that we have. We've worked with the city. We've, we've given the city these properties. We've, we've also worked with the Muncie Sanitary District. We've given them properties, you know? And we, we work with the city. We continue to work with the city. And, and there was another thing that was stated that, you know, we're not working with the mayor. I have been working with the mayor since he's been elected. I, we've, the county's even offered our economic development team to assist Dave when he was there to, to help him. And the comments that was made in that meeting was, it wasn't right because it makes it sound like we're all not working together to try to come to an understanding that, yes, you know, we want to work with the city to help the city, but we would also like for the city to work with us and, and help us. You know, that's whatever, I, I thought that's what everybody wanted us to do was, you know, to work together, to come together to make Delaware County and the city, Muncy, a better place to develop and everything. There was also a comment that was made in there that more or less said that we don't want to see the south side of Muncie developed, which I believe was, was wrong because, you know, one of the things, the south, people that live on the south side, I come from the south side of Muncie. I want to see Muncie developed. I want to see the south side developed, just like the north side, the east side, and the west side. That comment was wrong. You know, that you don't want to see the south side. We, we are putting trails on the south side of Muncie. We applied for a grant that would have gave us, because our half would have been 4.2 and the grant would have been another 4.2, which would have gave us $8.4 million to put trails on the south side of Muncie, which we were denied on ours. But the trail that was approved was on the west side of Muncie. So I understand where people from the south side are coming from. Because it seems like when we apply for something or we need something or we want to develop something, it goes elsewhere.
I understand your frustration with individual members' comments at that.
Right, because me and you, we, we talked Friday and had a good conversation.
And I cannot speak for them or I cannot control what they say.
Right.
And I know that, that the mayor is very interested in doing negotiations for these properties that, that you're really interested in and that you have, that the city has properties that you're interested in and you have, the county has properties that the city is interested in in addition to these.
Right.
And I also understand that you have been very generous giving multiple certificate, tax sale certificates to the city. And I guess I'd also like to be, make it clear that what we're asking you for are tax deeds. So we already have a deed to the property if you pass this resolution. It's not a tax sale certificate where there's, you know, a lot of additional work that needs to go into perfecting that. And that the money that we're offering you is going to come from the state as well. So it's, it's part of the blight elimination program grant. So we would really like to be able to go forward with demolishing these houses. And the city just doesn't have the resources to be able to demolish. I mean, this, this, these 19, I believe there are, how many more do you have that will go in to the final blight elimination that Muncie has had? About 20. So we'd be able to double the number of houses that we demolished with the blight elimination and plus we've got the red carpet end that's coming down. We've awarded all the contracts for that now. That's a huge benefit to the south side of Muncie.
On this money that you'd like to.
And, and because we're spending the money on, on the red carpet end, we won't have as, as much money this year for just our regular neighborhood demolitions. So find it in your hearts to approve this resolution just for the blight elimination properties.
John, let me.
The city would appreciate it and the residents that live in the neighborhoods where these properties are located would also really appreciate it.
John, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
The properties are owned by MRC, correct? That the county's interested in and interesting in future development?
Yes.
So if we pass this today, it's still in MRC's hands, which they can keep denying and denying and denying the mayor on the transfer of the properties?
Correct. The MRC would have to take the affirmative action to transfer the properties to the county, which they could do if they wanted to. And that was part of the discussion back in February with the mayor was that this would occur. And the blight elimination properties weren't discussed originally. There were other properties. And then it became the blight elimination properties in the last 10 days or so.
Mm-hmm. The resolution we passed has all of those addresses they're requesting, plus, plus some.
Two pages, I'll say.
Plus some.
But the Redevelopment Commission did not get together to approve this resolution for 48 hours. And we have to have site control of the blight elimination lots today. It's the deadline.
You'll, you'll have site control because we'll sign the resolution.
No, because we wouldn't have passed, we wouldn't have passed similar resolutions, is that right? Substantially similar?
There would, site control, the commissioners have signed it. They would, the, it would pass back to the, to the Redevelopment Commission to approve the substantially similar. They could have an emergency meeting. They could have an emergency meeting today if they wanted to. They could declare an emergency and have a meeting today if they, if they could get a quorum.
Yeah. With a Zoom meeting in case somebody's out of town? Would that qualify, I suppose?
Does that mean a public notice requirement?
You give the public notice requirement the same notice you give to your board members under the open, open meetings law. If you declare an emergency, emergency has to be done.
What are you doing this afternoon? Why can't we just rescind the one that we passed and pass? Why can't we just rescind the one that we passed and pass this one?
That, that's up to the commissioners.
You know.
These, these discussions have been going on since February about this.
You know, I want, I want to see the, the blight removed from the city, the county. It just upset me also a little bit, the way the MRC meeting was handled, because some of them, some of the comments was made was totally wrong. I know you've worked with our economic development team and has had phone conversations. Me and you, we also had our phone conversation. Everybody's wanting the city and the county to work together. I thought that's what we've been doing for the last six months. Some others, I hate to say it, I believe, have different agendas than what others do, and we also discussed, discussed that. This, this is, the problem I have is, they have a meeting on Friday and want us to jump into this Monday morning, but then they come here and they don't like, they don't like our resolution. Well, I, I understand that, but.
It was a lot, a multiple day, most of last week, going back and forth in negotiations with Joe Retsch and the mayor. I'm not, I'm, I'm really not, I don't have any dog in the fight about any transfer, trade, swap, whatever you want to call the properties. I'm, I'm really only here to represent the blight elimination properties.
They're on our resolution.
On behalf of the neighborhoods that those properties are located.
I think, yeah, I think we received it Friday afternoon after Joe.
Right.
And if you see, if you see these little pictures of each property.
Mm-hmm.
They, there's not a house on here that any one of you would want to live next door to or across the street from.
Mm-hmm.
Or across the alley behind even.
Once, once these are demolished, Dane, what's, or Gretchen, what's the plans with these? Will they just sit idle, or?
It'll be the same, the city, in, in, in the course of the meetings that we had, I've heard several times, or I've heard from, I've heard more than once, that, you know, the city just, you know, they took all these, these properties, many of which had been through multiple tax sales, and they get an owner that's from out of state, and then it cost the county every time these properties.
Right.
Roll through a tax sale too, and that we didn't do anything with them. Well, we did do something because we spent five to fifteen thousand dollars demolishing each one. We turned it into a brassy lot that we mow and maintain. We offer them, we have a process where we offer the properties to adjacent property owners for, how much money? A hundred dollars, for a hundred dollars, and then we transfer the properties to the adjacent property owners, and they double the size of their yard. Now, every adjacent property owner doesn't want an extra yard to mow, especially when we're already mowing it. So it's, it, I don't consider a demolished property doing nothing. If there was a market for these houses, then the people that are buying them in the tax sale would be putting money into them and renting or selling them, but there isn't, which is why we're in the situation that we're in. And I wish there was more of a market for it. The, a developer did come to the redevelopment commission and asked for an option to purchase forty properties of the blight elimination that were, you know, that, that we just demolished houses for blight elimination.
Did you guys have to sign a confidentiality agreement with this company? Can you tell us what the name of the company is?
Uh, it's Miller Valentine Affordable Housing.
Are they the same ones that worked?
Mm-hmm.
To do the project down here at the Roberts?
Yes.
South, South Madison, too, I believe.
But, but their offer is contingent on if they are awarded low income housing tax credit, so if they aren't awarded the tax credit, then we won't be able to sell the lot.
Has any of the properties been offered to Habitat? Have they accepted any of the properties? How many properties have they accepted?
Ten, ten, tenish.
Tenish?
Yeah.
And has ECO been taking some too?
Sorry.
The ECO?
Um, ECO rehab, I mean, they primarily, they rehab the houses, the majority of the properties that they don't, you know, have lots. There was one, one house that we demolished that was a Jason, the ECO rehab project, that had foundation issues, a car lot to issue on the foundation through support, the primary, and houses, and primarily have lots.
And I haven't meant the new, the gentleman that's working for the land bank, but.
Yeah, there's some executive director there.
That's some promising.
I think, I think it seemed like part of the issue is that it's difficult for the commissioners to negotiate directly with the redevelopment commission, public meeting laws. It was, I obviously can't speak for any individual members of the redevelopment commission. It kind of seemed like from the Friday meeting, the majority were not necessarily opposed to the county acquiring the properties on and off Tillotson. It seemed more so, there was an concern with fixing the issues of those properties and the BEB properties, and as well as just transferring outright market value of the properties on and off Tillotson seemed to be pretty high in comparison, in comparison to the properties that, uh, MRC was speaking. So it, it kind of seemed like those are the two issues. It didn't seem like the primary concern was the county acquiring that property.
I, I believe with the black properties and the other three properties, it was two hundred and forty thousand dollars, is that correct? And then the properties that you had at Tillotson was two hundred and eighty thousand?
That sounds about right.
So it would have been trading two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of properties for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which to me sounds better than trading thirty-three thousand dollars worth of property to, for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of property.
Yeah, and again, I guess.
You know, it, it just.
I can't speak for the members of the redevelopment commission. Like I said, I think it was an issue of just wanting the issues to be separate. That, and that, that was, those numbers, the two hundred and eighty and two hundred and forty, were just the assessed values. Appraisals were not taken, and it, and it looked at the photos that I forwarded of the properties we're seeking for demolition. Obviously, they're, they're significantly deteriorated, and I.
Well, and, and I, I under, I understand that, what you're saying, uh, but I know the one, when they were talking about doing the appraisals, the appraisals was for, I believe, the property they were talking about, the Ratchford property, that was purchased for twenty-five thousand dollars, which now is being purchased for a hundred thousand dollars, and that's one property, correct? The county owns three properties that you guys are wanting over, that, well, not you, but MRC is wanting over here. Uh, and I, they brought up the assessed property value of those properties, too, so I think we have one that's about the same amount as what the Ratchford property was, that the city's paying a hundred thousand dollars for right now. That was twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's certainly difficult because I'm not communicating directly with the redevelopment commission.
Yeah.
We're not trying to make a big deal. I guess the, the resolution that was forwarded to us on Friday by Mr. Retsch was not the resolution that was passed today. The resolution that was forwarded to us was just the BEB property administrative monetary.
Well, and I, I'm going to tell you, and this is, and I don't know if the other commissioners would agree with this, but this is where I stand right now, is I am for black property. I'm for getting rid of the property. I'm not for playing political games back and forth. And I did not like the comment from Mr. Cecil Bohannon that, "We'll just throw it back on the commissioners, and if they don't pass this, then that means they're totally against blighted property." You know, I, I've, I've watched the MRC meetings, I've, I've heard one guy make the comment that he really doesn't know what his job title is, or what he, MRC does. He needs guidance, he needs somebody to show him. If you look at the commissioners, and you look at our economic development team and our Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, we know what to do. Just look at our track record.
One of the best in the state.
Absolutely. So look at our track record. So I would say that Delaware County commissioners would be somebody that people would want to look at and say they're doing it right. They're doing it legal. I put faith in them, and I trust them, just like we are with the mayor. So I, I'm, honestly, right now, I'm, I'm thinking about giving you your properties for the eighty-some thousand dollars. And trusting, putting the trust back on the MRC members to see if this is a political game, or if they actually want to help the people on the South End by tearing down the blighted properties and actually seeing the South End get developed like they deserve. Like I said, I come from the South Side. Those people over there, they're my people. They're my constituents, just like everybody in Delaware County. I don't like somebody forcing my hand, making me do something, just because they want to put something back off on us, and I think everybody in this room would, would tell you, the county's done it right. There's not one person in here that's got a federal indictment against them. There's not one person in here that's done anything illegal. We do everything right. People want to talk about transparency? We are transparent. We don't hide anything. I have not had one MRC member even contact me about one thing, and that's what bothers me. And, you know, I thought about sitting up here, just keeping my mouth shut and just going on, but sometimes it's hard, because when you sit in these political seats, people want to talk about you, they want to say things about you that's not true, and honestly, I'm tired of it. So, John, do you have the, the one resolution?
Well, here's an email, here's an email that we received from Mr. Bishop on May 18th that Joe sent me. Deadlines are not being extended by the Department of Treasury, and the IH CDA cannot grant extensions that the Treasury hasn't. However, if the commissioners were to be able to provide a letter of res, or resolution showing that they're willing to transfer their properties, that will be all that's needed for the June 1 deadline. That was sent May 18th from Mr. Bishop to Gretchen, and Joe, and Ed Carroll, and Heather.
Which is my point, we sign the resolution and give to them.
According to Mr. Bishop's email, that's all that was necessary.
Certainly not a deferring. I think the concern that I may see that would be up to the MRC, or could be challenged later, kind of seems like the resolution that was passed is contingent on the redevelopment commission passing a similar resolution.
That's correct. That's, they have, according to the way the rules are, the redevelopment commission would have, the, the county is ceding control of those properties, subject to the redevelopment commission approving that similar resolution.
So that's where, that's where it seems like it, it could be money.
I'm just quoting your words.
I understand.
Does, does the MRC have a attorney at tenure meeting?
Yeah, who is the director of the MRC right now? Where are they?
The director of the MRC has resigned, so stated that the, the May regular meeting.
Right, so who's running the MRC?
That guidance has not been given.
So the MRC has no guidance? They have no point of contact?
The, the mayor obviously works with the redevelopment commission. I don't work with the redevelopment commission.
I understand that, but who is, who is the direct, because the way it sees, the way I look at it, the mayor has, does not have control of the MRC. Nobody has control of the MRC. Nobody is over the MRC. The Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, we have Brad Bookout, and we have Bill Walters that works, work for us, so if you guys have any problems or anything, or want to discuss resolutions, properties, you have somebody you can go through. Who does the MRC have that can discuss these issues with them? That's.
At this point, it would be the mayor, and the mayor was not able to be at the meeting on Friday. He had some prior commitment.
Right.
But obviously, the mayor's, I mean, I think, until there's a director appointed, the mayor is going to be the contact person with the MRC.
But we've been contacting the mayor and working with the mayor over and over on this, and now we're at this point here.
And I believe the mayor was in support of the resolution.
As presented Friday.
Yes, as, as presented Friday.
So what we have now, what we pass first, the mayor is.
Some of your appointments don't always do exactly what.
I don't want people to, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't want people doing exactly what I tell, tell them. I mean, that's ridic, I don't want a rubber stamp. I want people with their own minds. That's the reason why I sat in the position where I do, because everybody knows the back history of me being a Democrat and not getting along with them because of their thinking, and my thinking doesn't go along, and, you know, and now I'm a Republican, which I like exactly where I'm at right now.
And, you know, I, I did speak with every member of the redevelopment commission before the meeting, because it was kind of last minute. I understand they had something else last minute on their agenda the, the week before. They were, everybody, and, and no one likes something shoved in their face to make a decision on at the last minute.
Right.
It's just, it's just happened. You know, I think part of it is that we're in new administration, we, you know, we're just kind of figuring out all the things that we need to figure out, and they were, you know, they were all okay with it, but, you know, then they get together, and, I mean, I explained the situation, how we've been meeting, how we've been talking, how, you know, the different property, and I, they, they just don't have very much experience with that yet, I don't think.
And that's what scares me.
Well.
Yeah.
Okay, what?
So, so I, I have another question. What if you adopted this resolution that's only related to the BEB properties? Don't rescind the other one, but it won't go anywhere unless the redevelopment commission acts on it. Then you have two, you have two resolutions out there.
I was kind of wondering that.
The one that will go forward is the one that has, that's, that's been, has a similar resolution that has been or will be adopted by the commission.
I'm not in favor of having both of them out there. What, what's your, what's your pleasure right now? Do you stick with the one we adopted, or you guys talking about going with the other one?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20, 20 dash oh one six A, is an apple, as a backup, if we can do that.
So you're talking about amending the resolution you just adopted?
I'm talking about just having two, like Gretchen, what's the rules?
Okay, like two.
We all learn something every day. Tell us, John.
Yeah, that's true. We do learn every day.
Okay, so you're calling the old resolution.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, zero sixteen A.
Plan B.
Sixteen A would just have the blight elimination properties.
Yep.
I think that which is Exhibit B to.
Okay, Sherri made a motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, hold this, hold a second. No, because Exhibit B also has some other properties that are not blight elimination properties.
It just got Exhibit A.
Final one that Joe sent Friday did not have Exhibit B.
It just got, it just has eight, John.
I've got, yeah.
What I gave you this morning.
This is the one Joe worked on Friday.
Okay.
This is the other one where we received the eight seven thousand.
He sent a number of them, and that was the final one. That's the one he told Jenny to put in our book, or our packet, or whatever you call them.
Nineteen of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Two six. Two sixteen, yeah, okay. Then two sixteen A would have this exhibit A and the one that was sent Friday.
Correct.
The nineteen parcels.
Correct.
Because the exhibit A that was adopted day in sixteen has five other parcels on top of that. Parcels that the city had indicated that they wanted as well.
Correct.
The jury parking lot, that sort of stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be exhibit A with nineteen parcels on it.
Correct.
Okay, so that's resolution twenty twenty dash zero one six A.
And exhibit A, which is nineteen parcels.
Correct.
Well, that's what's on oh one six, right? Exhibit A with the nineteen?
Well, that was the, that was what was sent after the redevelopment commission meeting.
Okay.
So this would be sixteen A.
Okay.
You got that Denise?
Yeah.
So we have, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero one six A. Is there a second? Is this...
You have that list of...
I've got it right here, John.
Yeah.
Okay, the nineteen, okay.
Do you need it?
No, I've got it. Angie gave it to me.
Like I said, I don't want to stop the, the blight elimination. That's the least of what I want to do. But I also didn't like the comments from Mr. Bohannon that we'll just force the commissioners to do this. And if they don't do it, that shows that they, that's wrong. That's the wrong way to do business. And each one of the MRC people could have reached out to me and discussed with me, Shannon or Sherri, any questions that they would have had. They could have sent emails, anything like that. We could have answered the questions. But MRC, to me, is forcing the commissioners' hands today because if we don't do it, then they'll run out and say, we're against blight elimination. Even though we've given all these properties, they'll say the commissioners are against blight elimination, which we're not. So... I'll second Sherri's motion. Okay, we have a motion for resolution number twenty twenty dash zero one six A. James seconded. Rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
No. But I would like for you guys to explain this to MRC. We want to work with the city. We want to, we want...
I would personally do that myself.
We want to help develop the city, but we don't want them coming back and saying that the commissioners don't work with the city or try to put political stuff in front of doing stuff for the county and the city and working together.
Thank you very much for approving this motion.
Early birthday present.
And, yeah. And I hope to never have to come and be the one with something in a big story.
Hey, you know what we find in government? It doesn't work like a business. You have to go through the channels and the channels take time and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
But not verbatim.
John, are you seeing any comments on the commissioners at CO.Dellaware.in.us?
No, I haven't, I don't think I've received any of those. I've seen comments on Facebook, but they're just comments on Facebook.
Right. Okay. The last thing I want to do, I was hoping Jason would be here today, Jason Rogers. Mike will come up here for a minute. We, in the last meeting, Jason had, we all know Jason's going to be leaving on behalf of the commissioners. You know, Jason started his public safety career when he was sixteen or seventeen years, years old as a cadet with Albany MS. And then he went on and became an EMT with Albany MS and Delaware County MS as a paramedic. Went to Muncie Police Department, Ball State University Police Department, Albany Fire Department. He, he was in, he was on almost every department in Delaware County, I think. But he, he's been doing it for at least thirty years. So the commissioners wanted to present this plaque to him. It's a Jason Rogers and grateful appreciation of your thirty years of outstanding dedication and service to Delaware County twenty twenty. So Mike, why don't you accept that? And make sure he gets ahold of that, but the commissioners wanted to do that for him. So, again, thanks to Jason. Has anybody got anything else?
Jason's a great man. Hate to lose him. He's done a lot for us during this COVID nineteen, him, John, the team that they've got, Kyle. And, you know, once again, as Delaware County, we work as a team together to get things done. It's not about one individual. It's about the team. I've even stressed that when I talk to everybody. It's not me. It's not I. When you talk about Delaware County, it's we. It's all departments. It's everybody that works for the county. We're in this together, so, like I said, I'm going to miss Jason.
I am too.
He's, he's a great guy.
But we, we have two guys. Yeah, we have two guys sitting back here, Mike Ashley. And John Catino is going to do a fine job doing the job that, that Jason has done. So those, those guys are good guys and we're in good hands, so.
Yep, congratulations.
Appreciate you guys. All right, motion recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion recess and a second. Steve, could you call the rule?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. And recess.